All right, all right, folks. We're just waiting a couple of minutes to see if we get a quorum and then we'll get started. And if not, then I'll have an announcement either way. All right, folks, we're gonna get started here. Before we get started with the meeting, a couple announcements. Thank you. Before we get started with the meeting, just a couple announcements. As you can see, there are two council members here tonight, so we do not have a quorum, which means we cannot conduct regular business and we cannot go through the agenda. Having that been said, I told our city attorney that I didn't care and I'm gonna present all these kids their certificates anyway. He's advised me I shouldn't legally do that, but hey, what are you gonna do, fire me twice? So, to all the kids here, I will adjourn the meeting. The VFW then has a presentation they would like to make. It's gonna be recorded on YouTube. It won't be considered a council meeting, but you're all here and again, I don't wanna waste anyone's time and I definitely want to make sure these kids get the recognition they deserve. So, won't be a council meeting. We'll go through the motions, do the roll call. We'll do the pledge first. So we don't do a roll call? Oh, okay. All right, well, we'll make it even easier than that. So, we will cancel this meeting at 6:06 and I'll ask the VFW to come forward.
Okay. Can we like to call up the Grasslands Elementary School kids? Okay. We'd like to present Grasslands Elementary School with this framed flag for this year's participation and they were in the patriotic school contest and they won first place. They get to keep this flag for one year and then they have to defend it next year at the parade. So, I wanna thank them all. They did an excellent job. For those of you that did not see the veterans parade this year, I think it's the best we've ever had. These kids just really outdid themselves. So, thank you so much and...
Saint Patricia McCoy, the chairperson for the veterans parade. And I just wanted to say that Grasslands, every year, they put out an amazing float and it has always just been out of reach for winning. So, I was very happy behind the scenes that you guys won because you guys knocked it out of the park. So, I did wanna say that and I'm excited to see what you guys do next year.
Good evening, everybody. I'm with Office of Assemblymember Asmael DeSoria. My name is Vanessa and I'm here to present Grassland Elementary School with a certificate of recognition for their hard work and dedication and honoring the freedoms of our nation is very commendable. So, here you go.
On behalf of Grasslands Elementary, thank you very much to all of our veterans that do so much for our country. We're very thankful. And I personally wanna thank our parent club, our parents who worked on the float and to all of our students that showed up on Saturday morning to represent our school and to thank our veterans. Thank you very much.
I know what it is. Okay. Next, we have our junior high level and this year it was Creekside Junior High that won. Come on, I saw more kids from Creekside. Come on, get them up here. They must be in a log jam back there. All right. Come on, Mrs. Brandt. Come on, come on. Okay. This year's junior high level was won by Creekside. Creekside did an amazing job with their float. You could tell these kids worked hard and they continued to work and they put together a float that was absolutely wonderful. The judges all said, "Did you see the waves on that float? They were all moving." I think they were trying to fall off, but... But so, it was our pleasure to present this flag to Creekside Junior High that they get to keep until next year.
So, I was very excited to see that Creekside participated. The reviewing officer for the Coast Guard came in from Fresno and he watched the parade. He was amazed by what our small town was able to pull off, but he was in awe of all the floats. But I heard comments from judges and from the reviewing officer, "If I could give a million points, I would." You guys, hats off to you and I can't wait to see what happens next year.
And I understand they had just a little bit of a catastrophe, something about a helicopter falling off. Did you get the helicopter fixed? So, anyway, so, again, we wanna thank the Creekside and we have... Where did the rest of them go that got certificates?
It's me again, Vanessa. I just wanna congratulate Creekside for being one of the most patriotic schools in LB. So, congratulations.
Everybody got their pictures? You gotta come in a little bit because some come in. Come on, come on, kiddos. Over this way. We got room for all of you. Come on, keep coming.
Oh, yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you. I've heard a lot about you. So, very nice. Finally, me too.
I didn't do it.
Oh, my gosh. That's where you get your sense of humor. Oh, my goodness.
Okay, next. Our next level was the high school. This year, it was Los Spanish High School. After a lot of years of encouragement and us bugging them, they finally really put together an awesome entry this year. So, I wanna thank them very much for that. Okay, you guys gotta squeeze in here because all of their wide-angle photographing stuff broke. Keep coming.
All right, so my announcement to Los Spanish High School. Again, the judges, reviewing officer, your enthusiasm was off the hook. You guys did an amazing job and we are so excited that you guys participated last year, but I am really thrilled you guys participated this year. So, way to go. We'll see you guys next year.
Just on behalf of Los Spanish High School and Los Spanish High School Associated Student Body, we were honored to participate in this event. The veterans and honoring our veterans is something that's near and dear to my heart and our kids showed it with the passion they put into that parade. So, thank you.
Okay, you gotta get your flag.
All right. So now, it is my honor to present certificate of recognition for their hard work and dedication and being recognized as a national two-star program at the National Future Farmers of America Convention. If I could have the representatives of Pacheco High School come forward. Congratulations. For recognition of hard work and participation in the AgriScience Project at the National Future Farmers of America Convention and placing ninth place in the nation from Los Spanish Junior High, Camila Rodriguez. In recognition of hard work and participation in the AgriScience Project at the National Future Farmers of America Convention and placing eighth in the nation from Los Spanish Junior High, Riley Chufa. In recognition of your hard work and participation in the National Spanish Creed at the National Future Farmers of America Convention and placing in the top 12 in the nation, and your last name is about as easy to pronounce as mine, Ingrid Langerica? You get that right? In recognition of the hard work and participation in the National Spanish Creed at the National Future Farmers of America Convention and placing fourth in the nation from Pacheco High School, Andrea Aguilar. I'm in limbo, all right. In recognition of your hard work and participation in the National Voting Delegate for California in the Future Farmers of America Convention and for being the sectional secretary for the Merced Mariposa Section FFA from Los Spanish High School, Jaleen Boriga. Now, I have no idea where I'm looking, but that's all right. In recognition of your hard work, participation in the AgriScience Project at the National Future Farmers of America Convention and placing ninth in the nation from Los Spanish Junior High, Eleni Rodriguez. That's the end of the non-meeting. Alright, that's, that's the end of the non-meeting.
Hey sweetheart, how are you? How are you?